Board Budget Hearing Minutes of February fourteenth.
Make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second. Any further discussion on that?
I have nothing. Nice job, Sharon.
All right, all those in favor, so if I was saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed and sentience, I will abstain from those. And then the next item is the approval of the school board meeting minutes of February fourteen.
I'll make a motion for those minutes.
Second, Casey. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, so if I was saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed and sentience, I will abstain. Then we have the non-public session minutes of March seventh.
It was not yet.
All those in favor, so if I was saying, oh, sorry, any discussion on that? All those in favor, so if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Close, extensions.
Same.
And maybe states. And then the approval of the school board meeting minutes of March seventh.
I'll make a motion for it.
Thank you. Second, thank you, Joe. All those, or any discussion on that? All the favors, so if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sentience.
Same.
Same, maybe states. Then next up is the warrant article assignment, and so we have Rob.
Hello.
Well. We're pretty good trim warrant this year. Warren is just nice.
He needs it, not the last one.
The voice is still recovering too much.
And I think the objective is to just sort of assign those. But really, really, it's basically the budget and the collective bargaining agreement, really, that we have to have somebody prepared to. So I'll take the budget, and you or Jasmine will handle that. Do you want?
Yeah, I'll talk to her.
If it's Jasmine.
It doesn't matter. Yes, I'll talk to Jasmine, either Jasmine or I, and we'll let you know next week.
Are you, will be available for questions, or do you want justice to recognize you as that?
So. Probably speak to it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I had to.
I'll definitely speak to the budget.
Okay.
Yeah. The, the rest of them, I think I can just be available for questions. It's just a simple capital reserve funds stuff. And then assuming Article Six passes, one should be prepared to table Article Seven.
I can do that.
There is a significant change in Article Four that I appreciate. Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. Well deserved. Are you prepared to just say that if someone asks that it hasn't been increased for a hundred years? And it used to be a lot less. Let me check into the towns and see what they have been, like, and just get comparable to the other surrounding towns.
Yeah, and all we've, all we've done is increase the pay of the folks that are working the elections. We're not giving ourselves a raise.
No, no.
Okay. Yep, I can certainly answer those questions as well, unless somebody else asks it.
That's pretty good with providing cheat sheets, too.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, if anyone needs anything, I mean.
Just the normal budgets.
Yeah, I mean, I have it right up in here, too, on the budget, but I mean, if you want more.
And just what was the date that the last time the election officials.
Oh, for that, yeah, I can go back.
Just, and so they, I don't think anybody's going to question it, but if somebody asks, we can say it's been fourteen years or something. Probably close to that anyway, ten anyway.
I think we can count that as over a decade.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I've been school district moderator since two thousand thirteen or fourteen, before that.
Yeah, so over a decade, perfect. It was before two thousand one.
Was it?
Yeah.
They came with a request.
You mean the, the poll workers and the.
Yeah, way back, too. I think probably at that point, probably like.
Twenty-five dollars.
Maybe dollars or something, I don't know.
So, yeah, I think that's it. Do you need anything from us as far as?
I don't think so.
On other business, I'm assuming you plan to say something. We have a different school board member, and there is fire superintendent, so.
Oh, this is our last year before you guys are leaving.
Will you be prepared, prepared to say something? Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Out of the blue.
Yeah. Indeed.
And I just had a question about restricting reconsideration.
I usually jump in after the budget and do that. Maybe I'll jump in after the collective bargaining and do that.
Yeah, that, right.
Okay.
I worry more about that when we have, when we anticipate a longer discussion, some other warrant articles, but I can't imagine that, I mean, we're going to, if we get through those two. There's generally not a whole lot of discussion regarding, you know, funding our trust funds and stuff, and so we can get through that before.
Engage the room, too. Sometimes you know you have to, sometimes you know you don't, so we'll see what's coming on. I don't see, there's nothing controversial in here, so I don't think it's going to be a long drawn out issue. Although I said that now, James said it.
Yeah, right. Deb's like, don't say it, don't say it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll see you all on Tuesday.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, Robert.
You're welcome. Correspondence, next up. I believe correspondence is just mostly relying on the superintendent. Search, and I've been forwarding both that to the board members. We received tonight sort of the anticipated timeline for the process. I forward that to everybody, so we basically might get a sense of like what that looks like. It sounds like it's a realistic timeline from the perspective of the folks in the Brian group, so hopefully we can make that work. And I don't know if we heard for the next week, what's that timeline for next week?
The timeline for finding somebody, finding a, yeah, yeah.
So what, you know, you.
Monday the eighth, need to be the first.
This afternoon. But basically, we just pulled up. Yeah, so week one, you'll notice there's not really much going on in week one.
So, yeah.
Yeah, week two is when we're hoping to have, I think, in place the first meeting of the selection committee. And so we have to, the plan is have a meeting before Tuesday night's meeting to actually pick the folks that are going to be on the selection committee. And I don't, has there been, have we gotten much interest? Because we can start, I'm not going to endorse and.
I heard from a couple of people that I, I just copied the notice that I saw online and texted it to them so they could get what's up with Sharon.
I mean Sharon, sorry. It's okay. We currently only have received three letters.
Okay.
I've heard from two other people that they're interested, but they haven't, I responded that we need a letter of interest. And they have not yet returned those, but that's, that's where we are so far.
Are we going to reach out to like the selectmen in the two towns? Or anyone else that they, there was a parameters that he would, that would be good to have, you know, some teachers from both buildings, some school board member or two, some members of administration. The, the selectmen from the towns, the, you know, the key players in the community.
I did send it to both town clerks for to.
I will follow up on that with both towns.
Yeah.
Yeah, and just as the, you know.
But it was the busy time of year for them, obviously.
And I did reach out to Calcare Center to see if they wanted to, representation. I thought another one would be good on it was the rector of the two towns would be the one. So I reached out to that one.
And I, I don't know if any of the, the members of the city have gotten up in staff members, but I know that we, you know, so prior to this. David Rupster had sent me an email and came that he was interested in being part of it.
Yeah, he is one of the ones that has been received.
I don't know, I was going to say, I can reach out to him and just tell him to send it.
Yeah, he is, he is one that has been received.
Great. So that's it for correspondence for me.
Uh, yeah, that's it. Just the NCS newsletter and, yeah, activity calendar.
Next up is the business administration form.
Yeah, just something. So, yeah, you guys all got a copy of the annual report, and these are just standard reports that we usually put in here. Some are required and some is, you know, different reports from different departments and things like that. This year, we're, we made up a little flyer that we're going to hand out, have available, just because sometimes at annual meeting, we, we have information out there. So I seen a sample from another district, just thought it was some good information, there's some budget information, there's some student enrollment information, there's some student testing information. A little, you know, snippet of different things, so we just wanted you guys to see a copy of it, see if you are okay with that, and.
I liked that, that was a great idea.
You know, because again, we usually do put information out there, but we just thought this would be a nice way to have it out there. Mostly what we pulled off of the DOE website. Lots of testing stuff, which are aligned with everything that's been reported anyway. Is that, yeah, there's some manifests this week. In between the annual meeting and the first meeting of the next board. We, we continue to do business and have payroll through bills, so I'll continue to send out messages to come in and sign manifests. Because we've got to keep things going. And just one other thing that came up last night at the Lincoln meeting, at the end of the Lincoln meeting. Tammy Tuttili got up and thanked the selectmen and the police chief for having the SRO at the school.
School board administration, yeah.
Yeah, and the school board, you know, and because it's part of our, it's part of our budget, part of the town budget. And just thank everyone for having the SRO position at the school, and specifically the officer. She was very highly, you know, praising the officer that's in the school. I thought that was really nice.
It was, she had some good things, nice things to say.
Yeah, yeah. That's it.
Thank you. Dr. McGee?
Yeah, this one thing, I just want to, oh, a couple of things, but one of the things is that. You want to have another board meeting prior to your school district meeting?
Yeah, I think we need to have a, here's the problem. If we don't get that done.
Right.
Prior to that meeting, then we have to wait until April tenth, and that's not really good. So I think we need to meet so that the board can choose the folks out of the pool of interested people to be on that selection committee and get that processed.
And that makes sense. So you could have the board meet, I'm trying to do, go around your schedules now, because you're going to have your school district meeting at seven. You could have a six o'clock meeting, and the reason why I say six o'clock is because you probably get it done within.
What time do the polls close?
Six.
I know, it usually help count, I know I usually help count.
Generally not for this.
You just have to make sure you have thirty minutes after your meeting available in case somebody wants, just somebody wants to say something, because you, you always have that.
Yeah.
You know, if there's nobody there, that's fine. You don't have to sit there for thirty minutes, but you just have to, so that's why it has to close at six thirty. Well, I mean, it has to close before seven.
Yeah.
But at the six to seven type of thing, so you could do your meeting in the gymnasium. Because that's where the school district meeting is going to be, in the high school gym.
There will be people there.
And.
Which is fine. Yeah.
I anticipate, though, that we're, that we are maybe having to do the, the selection process in non-public.
Well, this is my next thing. So, so you open the meeting in the gym.
Yeah.
And then you can go into another room off of the gym, having meetings like the library.
It's down home.
People in there, so. And then come back again.
Yeah. We have to be back in by six thirty.
No, I mean, you don't have to be, but you have to be ready to go for seven.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, and then, and you have to allow for thirty minutes after your meeting, in case anybody wants to say anything. But, yeah, so you would open your meeting in the gym and then go into a non-public.
Yeah, I think that's probably what we have to do, so six o'clock.
Yeah.
Can we post that?
That's what I was thinking, six.
I, I mean, unless we get a large influx of letters of interest in the next few days, then, you know, it's not going to be a terribly difficult process.
No, it'll be fine.
Are we concerned about not having enough? So, you know, there's, I think we can, we can have up to three school board members on the selection committee. I know that we need that many, but we can have up to three, and then there's been some staff that's interested. And so they'll tend to, ten to twelve is what they sort of target. So I don't know, I mean, if you have anybody that you have in mind that may be a good fit for that, just a problem to sign up. I think it would certainly be helpful to help community members, whether they have a kid in the school or not, you know. It'd be helpful to have.
I'd like to get one of them.
I don't know.
I know you're surprised at that.
I hadn't heard.
No way.
So I, yeah, that would work, I think that would, so does that work for everybody else as far as timing?
I don't know if we think we'll be done.
Yeah, we can, if we're not, we can always adjourn until after the meeting, but that would be kind of cautious. I, well, I just, I don't know about the logistics of like Ashley being gone, and then we can't really, I mean, if we continue that meeting.
We can, once the, at the conclusion of the district meeting, she's no longer a board member.
Yeah, so we would have to do.
Unless she can come in early, then. We just figured, because dinner's at five thirty, we're coming into that anyway.
Yeah.
Right. We'll do it before then.
Maybe.
Well, I mean, we can open the meeting at five thirty, go in, have dinner, and meet at the same time. Just gives them half hour.
Is there, can I do five thirty? Yeah, yeah, okay, let's do five thirty. Thank you. Last will be the nineteenth. Is that due?
Okay, so, March twelfth, yesterday, we had a professional development day. And so the teachers worked on cyberbullying training, they also worked on some NIAS, well, projects that they were continuing to work on in their teams. And we had two speakers. We had Dr. Carol, Elizabeth Tolman, and she was one of the authors of Letters. That programmed that word, the science of reading, and so she was just fabulous.
They had the feedback for those, fantastic, yeah.
They really enjoyed it, yeah. And then we had Adam White, who talked about change and resilience, and he was excellent.
Awesome.
So it was a, it was a good, it was a, a good day. I think everybody got a lot out of, out of it. It's so hard when you think of the people to come in, you know.
Right, right.
For everybody. Other than that, which foreign project, the facilities committee, we'll be able to talk about that. And kindergarten registration is May first.
Do we still have only six identified for next year? Kindergarteners, incoming kindergarteners, I know that it was only six.
It's increased now.
Oh, good.
Yeah. Nine.
We have ten on the current list.
Excellent. Last, I had heard that it was only six, so that's great. Good. I get nervous when there was only one single birth in the town of Lincoln all last year, and two, and it would stop. That's it. Yeah.
That's crazy. We had a meeting with Cafe Services, and the administration met with, with them, and the, it said March twenty-fifth will be starting the breakfast after the bell program. So we'll see how that goes.
I know there's a couple of kids are excited about that, actually.
It was good. It's been successful in the past, so.
Good, good.
Do that. And the rest of the information, I can certainly do according with the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Robert?
All right, good evening, everyone. Dr. McGann stole a couple of things that I was going to share, but that's okay, and we kind of cross-referenced with Mr. Higgins, so we, we get lots in to kind of share out. As always, if you have questions, feel free to ask. First off, just wanted to note, McKenna Mack, one of our students, skier, did really well, had to be the champions, well enough to make Easterns. And then the girls' New Hampshire State Eastern team actually beat out ten other states to take top honors.
Fantastic.
Ended up being on Saturday, there's a lot of schedule changes with the weather, but she was pretty excited, and she was really chatted with her a little bit this week. And she was very grateful for the opportunity to connect with some of those, those other skiers from the schools. A lot of them from the North Country, but not all of them, but just connect throughout the Saturday.
Great to hear.
Yep. Prior to vacation, we had winter carnival across, you know, K-12, elementary had a full day of indoor and outdoor activities. Middle school had their annual cardboard box sled races that they did up, and then headed over to the kink for lots of other activities on Friday. And then, you know, the high school, they did their whole typical hallway decorating contest, and then they had some opportunity on Thursday, and then all day Friday for a variety of different activities. Juniors came out on top this year, but the great.
Enough snow for snow sculptures.
Not enough snow for snow sculptures.
Is the elementary going to start going back to the kink as well, now that COVID's over, everything's done? Is that going to be implemented?
It's definitely an opportunity. This year, you know, they had conversations. Last year, we actually started at a half day. This year, they expanded to the full day, and then they're evolving it kind of as we.
Did the elementary went to the kink as well this year?
Not this year. Last year, we, we only did a half day winter carnival activity. This year, we did full day, but it was onsite.
On site.
So that being, that being said, looking forward, there's that opportunity around scheduling.
That would be cool, yeah. I know that the kids really enjoyed it.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of fun. You leaving?
Yeah.
I wasn't paying attention. We're not going to all get up to leave when you lock in.
In terms of just some other PD stuff going on, you know, we're, we're pretty lucky here. We have Kristin Geras, who is our library media specialist. She's actually been hosting, she just ran a full, a full certification for CPR for staff.
Oh, nice.
We had about ten people make that up, and she has a research class coming up next week with another ten or so staff that are part of that. So we're pretty, pretty fortunate to have that training onsite, and someone able to do that. Last week and then today, we had our elementary and middle schoolers take the writing portion of the New Hampshire State Assessment. It's a little earlier than normal because they are releasing new prompts, and they're actually hand-scoring everything this year. Just to kind of calibrate things before it goes into the computer-generated scoring for next year. So we have until Friday to finish up. We had a couple of students that were absent that we'll take care of tomorrow, Friday. And then in May, they will, everybody else will take the reading, the math, and then the science in grades five E and eleven. We have SATs coming up in two weeks. Mr. Manning's been working the tray and bar to make sure that all the, all systems are go from the computer standpoint. We're going to be catering breakfast through our food service program that morning to those juniors. And then staff will be bringing in desserts for them as they.
Nice.
Kind of cut out around lunchtime.
Excellent.
Yeah.
It's the first year that it's all online, right? Just knew the new SAT protocol.
Fully, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, the last couple of years, they've been, and been able to, but this year, it's a hundred percent online, so all of our juniors are ready to go.
Good.
Yep, and then the last thing is.
Two for the last three years, we have, we have been online.
We have been?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the last thing, just to share, you know, we're in the middle of March, which is really, well, really across America. We kind of spin it so that it takes up the entire month. We've had a lot of guest readers from both buildings, students and staff coming up and sharing passages and books, and mystery books going into the classrooms to read and share. We've had staff going down and reading excerpts from books and stories or poems that they enjoy over the loudspeaker, you know, right after announcements. All in all, we've had a lot of collaboration with that. We'll be ending the month like we did in a similar fashion as last year with a family literacy night. That would be getting pushed out shortly. So, lots going on. Oh, I'm going to mention this too, only because our student council really wanted to host a regional dance. So they have gone through kind of some checks and balances, objective prime, all, all kind of those things. We made some phone calls up to Little Fin and Profile. And on April fifth, they're going to have a regional semi-final.
Nice.
Oh, that's fantastic.
That's the thing, yeah.
That's great.
That's a good idea.
It's a great idea.
I guess that used to be done in the past, and, you know, I called the administrators up there to kind of give them a little bit of heads up, and they're like, oh, yeah, we've done that before. It's been a while, though.
Yeah.
Kids are really adamant, really, I thought the offer, yeah.
Nice.
Well, still always did a dance with BMU right across the river.
Yeah. Oh.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah. Committee reports.
Yeah, you have the, facilities had a meeting just today. Joe, did you want to go over that one?
Yeah, I mean, it's nothing really new.
Yeah.
For the please or anything, but Mark has met with Cobb Hill about the doors and windows. We're going to start putting a plan together for this, I believe this probably for that. The installation of the new multi-purpose room air handler is in. This is my personal point, we've got to definitely see more savings on that, because that's got variable drive in it, too. So that should save a little bit. Plus, they had their engineers go into the high school and did a water balancing through the whole heating system, through the whole thing, so it should make a huge difference in that building. Flooring bids are going out, but I don't have the dates on that, so.
They're going to, yeah, they're going out, they do that April eighth in time for the April tenth meeting to pick a bid. And then we have to have a public hearing, because we're using the between-time balance, so we'll have that beginning of May.
That was the only one, I didn't have a bidding zone, and nothing really other than some painting got done, another air handler got done, I just did some of the subwinds, the supply closet and bathroom. Kitchen fire inspection, fire extinguishers were done, those are all passed. That's really it.
Thanks. We also had a risk management committee meeting on February sixth, and the minutes are included in your packet. Technology committee met on February twenty-sixth, and the minutes are included in your packet. Professional Development Committee met on March fourth, and they are finishing up on revisions of the professional development plan. That one will come to the board for approval, and, and that will, won't be up again for approval until two thousand twenty-nine. Like a five-year plan. And so we'll send that into the department event after the.
Two thousand twenty-nine, it sounds like forever, I saw it. Yeah, crazy.
Okay. And the admin's working on the suicide prevention plan, just finishing up on that actually, and with Aaron, Aaron Bell. And we are just finishing up on the template letters that need to be ready to go, you know, just in case we have something. So, and that's it.
On the business performing board, actually, nominations, recommendations, resignations?
I just have coaches. I just like to name the coaches. Middle school baseball is Stuart Anderson. Middle school softball is Kat Goss and Sarah Kreis. High school baseball is Mike Pope. Kevin O'Brien, Dave Bowden, and Matt Manning. And high school softball is Vance Pickering.
It's quite the staff for the baseball.
Yeah.
Vance is doing all the head stuff. You don't need any.
No, no, we're all set with that. Thank you.
Anything in new business?
No.
And then continuing business, just a strategic plan?
Uh, strategic plan, the more we work with the NIAS, the more we're correlating it with the district, uh, strategic plan seems to be working well. It's moving, it's coming together so that both the strategic plan and the NIAS plan is coming together, so that you will actually won't have two different plans that come together, so we'll be able to have a new document. Not good for that.
All right. We don't see, we have many students who are receiving, but we do have. All right, we won't see, we have many students here this evening, but we do have a safety.
I got Warren Peace for you tonight, sorry. So, first thing, uh, Aaron sent me, um, Kylie Claremont led F, Linwood's FPLA group in a screening of the film National Nation to a small. Group of high school students, including FPLA members. Much of this group had been scheduled to attend a statewide screening of the film in early December that was canceled due to bad weather. Uh, Kylie did an amazing job facilitating this event, which ended with discussions about mental health. And the creation of posters to promote mental, mental wellness and health seeking. Uh, this was part of Kylie's state officers project through FPLA. We are very thankful to the Jeans Playhouse for allowing us to host their screening in their setting. And to Kim Pickering's support with lunch. Um, the second annual Taste the World cultural event will take place on May the twenty-ninth in the middle high school gym. Uh, this is a wonderful K-12 event that helps celebrate cultural diversity of our community. Uh, a letter was sent home to families to see if they'd like to participate. We will also be reaching out to local businesses, um, as well for support. Uh, if anyone's interested, they can reach out to, uh, Dory Weed or Kristi Duras. Uh, the solar eclipse is coming to New Hampshire next month on the eighth. Come hear why it's happening and what you can do to maximize your viewing experience. Linwood is hosting astrophysicist Doug Arien, uh, to share why eclipses, and specifically this one, is worth watching. Uh, the reservation will be on Monday, March eighteenth, nine AM in the middle high school gym. All families and friends of Linwood are welcome. Uh, safe viewing glasses for the eclipse will be available, and I got a late one here. From Jess Holm, yesterday, five students traveled with her to NHTI and conquered, participate in the fiftieth annual New Hampshire State Math Competition. Uh, Linwood was recognized for participating, uh, for our first year, um, or at least the first year that anyone can remember doing this, so it's been a while if we did it before. Uh, this was the culminating event for the math league season. This year, Linwood joined the Lakes Region Math League. And we were able to participate in three out of the five competitions. Our last regional meet was our best, where we placed third out of five teams. Yesterday's participants were Abe Elward, Devin Parker, Rowan Brooks, Danny Halloran and Daniel Zhang. Uh, Rowan led the team with sixteen points, while both Daniels contributed, contributed four points. Uh, Abe and Devin are still working on getting on the board, but they're just freshmen, have many years ahead of them. Uh, this was a great experience, getting to visit a college campus, hearing about the great math and science courses that NHTI offers. And competing with students from thirty-nine schools across New Hampshire, getting exposure to some fun and some engaging math problems, including an essay question. Um, she also enjoyed the chance to mingle and swap experiences with other high school math teachers and coaches. Um, she looks forward to doing this again next year, and I've got photos that I can make sure, end up your life, but just pick it up in my email for the ladies.
Thank you. Uh, I don't see anyone from the community, so. No, all right, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn, do adjourn. Thank you, Bill. Is there a second? Casey, what's that? All of us in favor, so we can say hi.